Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the time is approximately seven thirty. My name is Samuel Oji. I'm the designee at this hearing for Montgomery County Department of Transportation. Here with me this evening to conduct this public hearing are Ms. Khadijah Ayiva, engineer with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation Division of Transit, of Traffic Engineering and Operations, as well as Ms. Laurie Main, who is our virtual host this evening. Ms. Ayiva will be providing the information and details regarding the access restriction that's under consideration. Thank you for joining us in this virtual platform. Although we've held several of these virtual hearings, we are still learning. So please bear with us if we encounter any technical difficulties tonight. Please note that tonight's hearing is being recorded. A link to the recording will be provided on the project website by five P M. tomorrow. You may find the link to the project website at the top of this evening's chat box. You may also notice that your video camera is turned off by default this evening to reduce the bandwidth of the meeting and maximize technical efficiency. We request that you please do not turn your video camera on. Likewise, your microphones have been muted. Once the testimony portion of this hearing begins, please raise your hand by clicking on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and then clicking Raise Hand. If you're joining us by telephone only, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad and star six to unmute yourself. Please wait until the testimony portion of this hearing to raise your hand. You may raise your hand at any time during the testimony portion. We'll call on you to provide your oral testimony and unmute your microphone when it's your turn to speak. Written testimony and comments may be submitted as well and will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. If time allows, following the testimony portion of this hearing, we will hold a Q and A session. You may also raise your hand to ask a question or you are welcome to type your question in the chat box, the icon for which is at the bottom of your screen. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant to Executive Regulation seventeen dash nine four A M. Through traffic volume access restrictions in residential areas. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain testimony to evaluate whether the benefits of the requested access restriction outweigh the potential impact on the surrounding community or arterial roadway network. This forum allows you to provide testimony either in support for or in opposition to the plan. Public comments should be focused entirely on the access restriction under consideration, which is the topic of discussion. All interested parties are entitled to be heard at this hearing. However, the testimony portion of this hearing is not a forum for dialogue, questions and answers, or cross-examination. Please direct your remarks to the specific access restriction under consideration that is the subject of this hearing. If comments stray into areas unrelated to this project, I will ask that you refocus your comments to the subject project. Following the conclusion of this public hearing, the record will remain open for an additional four weeks to allow any person who was unable to attend this hearing an opportunity to have their written testimony and comments included into the public record and be fully considered. The official closing date by which all comments and testimony must be received is Friday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at five P M. Submissions may be emailed or sent via regular mail and must be received or postmarked by the close of the hearing record. Written submissions will be considered with the same weight again as oral testimony. Submissions should be sent to Traffic Ops, so T R A F F I C O P S at montgomerycountymd.gov. After the hearing is concluded and the record is officially closed, I, as hearing officer, will review and weigh all the information submitted into the public record and make a recommendation to the county executive for his statement of decision as to whether the plan has been shown to be in the best public interest and whether to authorize the project as proposed. And now to discuss the access restrictions under considerations, I give you Khadijah Ayiva.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Odi. Good evening to Mr. Carcer, Ms. Main, ladies and gentlemen. The subject of this evening's public hearing is for a no right turn restriction four to six P M. on Decaro Avenue at Southbound Westwell, Westford Drive. So why the access restriction is under consideration? A representative of residents along Decaro Avenue west of Westford has requested that access to Decaro Avenue from Westford Drive be restricted. And you can see the area map. We have Decaro Avenue from Westwell, north going toward Connecticut Avenue. You can see it clearly from here. So before the implementation of the petition of the access restriction plan, M C D O T will ask the applicant to petition the resident in the area where the plan will be implemented. A signature of on the petition by simple majority of households, one adult by household within the area must be received to adopt the plan. We have to check the eligibility of Decaro Avenue. So to determine the eligibility, we need to meet some criteria set by the executive regulation. And therefore, M C D O T conducted a number of study, including first, determine to determine roadway classification. And second, we conduct traffic volume count. And third, we conduct license tags, survey some. And we check also the impact on roadway network. And finally, we determine access restriction to be considered. So for number one, the roadway classification. Access volume restrictions are limited to tertiary, secondary, and primary residential streets. And Decaro Avenue near Westford is classified as a secondary residential roadway and is a good candidate candidate for access restriction. And secondly, we conduct a traffic volume assessment. And Decaro Avenue has a twenty-four, twenty-four foot wide roadway with a seat parking on both of our side. It has one unobstrated travel lane serving both directions. For access restriction, the measured traffic volume must exceed one hundred total two ways vehicle per hour. A traffic volume count was conducted during peak hours on December fifth, two thousand twenty-two. And on the right side, you can see the result of that traffic assessment. Eastbound Decaro Avenue going from Westwell Drive to Connecticut Avenue, M D one eighty-five. In the morning, we have seventy-seven vehicle per hour. And westbound, we have forty-four out of vehicle. For the evening hours, we have eastbound one forty-two and a westbound seventy-two vehicle. So you can see from the table that eastbound P M. exceed one hundred vehicle per hour. The third criteria need to determine no local traffic or the cut-through traffic. What we call no local traffic or cut-through is through traffic diverted from arterial street onto local residential street to avoid either congestion or long trips with both an origin and destination external to the neighborhood. For access restriction, the non-local traffic should exceed fifty percent of the total to be considered. During our license tag survey along Decaro Avenue between five and six P M., a total of one hundred forty license plate were collected. And among those license plates, only twenty-two license plates, or sixteen percent, had originated from within three-quarter miles mile boundary. And I need to correct this. Okay. And the second thing is one eighteen license plate or eighty-four percent of vehicle had originate from outside that boundary of three-quarter of mile. We show that we have a cut-through pattern here. So the next thing we the M C D O T conduct is to check the impact on roadway network. We have intersection and the level of service. On the right side, in the blue shade area, you may see the letters, which means the level of service of those segment of road or intersection. Beach Drive at Westford Drive, the current level of service is B, which means short delay. And when we divert diverted traffic after the restriction, we'll have C, which means significant number of vehicles stopping. At Beach Drive at North Avenue, the current level of service is C, which means significant number of vehicles stopping. And with the implementation of a access restriction, we'll move to our level of service E, which means moderate to excessive delay. Now, at Connecticut Avenue, M D one eighty-five at North Avenue, the current level of service is E, which is moderate to excessive delay. And with implementation of the restriction, we'll move to F, which is excessive delay. After consideration, this is the sign you will see at Decaro Avenue at Westford Drive. So no right turn from four to six P M. on Decaro Avenue. If the restriction is approved, this is the sign we will install. We prepare the community discussion paper to submit all our funding and we share the the discussion, community discussion paper with the representative of residents along Decaro Avenue west of Westford Drive, as well as post to the project website. The representative of resident along Decaro Avenue west of Westford Drive reviewed the paper and approved the plan. So this way we are moving forward with the public hearing. The community assessment, the main purpose of the this community assessment is ensure public discussion and access to information. We put sign on Southbound Westorder at Decaro Avenue with information about the access restriction under consideration. This is the sign we post at the Westboard Drive and Decaro Avenue intersection. And the sign remained there for days, almost more than a month. We receive from that community discussion paper forty total responses. Those in favor were of the access restriction, what were its responses, or twenty percent. We have none objection, which mean not in favor, not opposed. And we receive eighteen, eighteen, or forty-five percent of the responses. Those who oppose the restriction were fourteen responses, or thirty-five percent. Other topic were raised during this public comments feedback. First, we have a traffic safety and operational improvement at other locations such as North Avenue and Connecticut Avenue, M D one eighty-five. Other comment was were to exempt the local traffic from the restriction. Some requested speed amp installation along Decaro Avenue. Other requested a always stop at Beach Drive and the Westford Drive intersection. And some resident raised a concern with diverted traffic along Deerfall Street, Deerfall Avenue. Most objection received were from residents along Decaro Avenue. A few comments were received from residents of the Rock Creek, Malisead neighborhood. The notice of public hearing were provided. We send emails notification to the representative of Decaro Avenue residents and all who commented in the community discussion paper. We also erected a sign notifying the community about the upcoming public hearing. We advertise legal advertisement published twice in the Washington Times and Montgomery County government press release circulated twice. The public hearing and the registration information was posted to Montgomery County Department of Transportation's project website. So for this, Decaro Avenue access restriction under consideration exhibits were included in the public record such as area map, implementation petition, eligibility, which means roadway classification, traffic volume counts, license tag survey, and impact on a roadway network. We publish also the community discussion paper. Montgomery County Government Press Release circulated February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four and March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The Washington Time newspapers and online advertisement published February fourteenth and twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four and post to various social media sites, including Nextdoor, X, Facebook, etc. Comment and testimony list of attendees to be added following this public hearing. Hearing transcript to be added also following this public hearing. Project related data and files are on the project website, W W Montgomery County, M D dot gov slash Decaro. Following this public hearing, the hearing record will be open for up to thirty days, closing on Friday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. Once the hearing record closed, the county executive will issue a statement of decision. The statement of decision will be communicated to all who have engaged in this process and submitted comments. So you may be wondering if the access restriction will be permanent if approved. If within ninety days of the permanent installation of the plan a significant unexpected problem develop as a direct result of the access restriction or if at any time a documented safety problem develops in Division of Traffic Engineering and Operation, D T E O may suspend the plan and reopen the access consideration process. All residents who engage in this process will be notified via mail correspondence. And reassessment, after three years, the D T E O may reassess, remove or alter the access restriction. If D T E O decides to reassess, new traffic study will be conducted and the access restriction under consideration process will start anew. I believe I'm done. Mr. Oji?
Thank you, Ms. Ayiva. So we'll now hear testimonies from those in attendance who wish to testify. If you've not signed up to testify but decide that you'd like to, please just click on the reaction icon at the bottom of the screen and then click, you know, to raise your hand. Alternatively, if you join the meeting by phone, you may dial star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand. Once you're invited to speak and unmute yourself, please, you know, unmute your icon by pressing star six. That's if you're on the phone. It's important that you provide your name, address for the record prior to beginning your testimony. In addition, you may submit your full testimony in writing. These submissions will be fully considered, along with the oral testimonies heard here today. Again, please reserve your questions to the end of all testimony portion of the hearing. Announce your name, just so we have it on the record. I will turn it over to Ms. Main to let in the speakers.
Okay, we will start with Amanda Greg. Um, I do not see Amanda here. Amanda, are you all right? How about Diane Lobston? Diane, ah, Diane, I see you. Okay. Can you please unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Diane and I have been a resident on Decatur Avenue for over twenty-four years. I'm testifying today in strong support of the proposed traffic restriction to prohibit the right turns from Wexford onto Decatur Avenue. From four to six Monday through Friday, I believe this is a positive first step in addressing traffic concerns, which include both volume and speed, among other concerns of the residents of Decatur Avenue. This restriction would be a welcome change and would be a positive impact of the volume on our traffic on our street. However, based on the traffic study results conducted from November first, twenty twenty-three, the four to six P M. Eastbound restriction does not fully encompass the rush hour traffic volume and leaves the westbound traffic unaddressed, as well as the morning rush hour traffic in both directions. Anybody can go see the traffic survey reports, I think. So I'm not going to cite the number of cars, but it is well over a hundred and fifty cars during rush hours between three and seven P M. window. The proposed restriction also does not address speeding concerns. Per the survey from November, over sixty-five percent of vehicles are exceed the twenty mile per hour speed limit. This poses a serious danger to residents, including elderly adults, Kaiser employees, many children, and many pets. The traffic restriction alone does not address or deter the speeding concern. And what I have begun to notice in the past year is the increasingly regular presence of very large and heavy trucks and construction equipment, which has begun to cause significant damage to the street. There's cracks and potholes, and this creates a potential hazard to all vehicles on the street, but also requires repair that the county has to pay for. So far, I have submitted four pothole repair requests and none of them have gone responded to so far. I urge the county to consider additional members, measures to comprehensively address the traffic issues on Decatur Avenue in addition to the proposed restriction to address the items I've mentioned. I fully appreciate the position of those who object to the proposed restriction, especially those vocal opponents who live on Lawrence. I ask those who object to please take five minutes during any peak rush hour window, typically four to five P M. And just watch one example of the insanity that occurs at roughly thirty-nine hundred Decatur Avenue. It will help you understand the gravity of the situation and the perspective of the residents who have to deal with this every single day, even on weekends. There are many residents who have repeatedly had personal property damage to their cars and almost daily there are near accidents with about and about three years ago, a car driving so fast down our street hit a parked car, flipped over, slid along the street for at least three houses, causing significant damage to other parked vehicles. I support the county's proposed initiative to restrict eastbound traffic and see it as a positive first step. Only by implementing additional volume and speed members with account measures will the county be able to help create a safer and more livable environment for all residents on Decatur Avenue. We urge you to consider the cumulative impact of these concerns and take decisive action to address urgent need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we'll hear from Leah Snyder. Here you are. Can you unmute, please?
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Leah Snyder. I'm a resident on Decatur Avenue between Lawrence and Connecticut. Recently, the sidewalk was added at the section closest to Connecticut and therefore we lost off-street parking for one of our cars and the street was narrowed by a few feet. It's actually narrower in the section directly in front of my house than anywhere else on the street, making it impossible for two-way traffic along the section basically between my house and about four houses down. There's parking on the street directly in front of my house. So therefore, this section and most of Decatur has become very dangerous, especially because of the cut-through traffic during the rush hour times, which tends to also include speeders, very aggressive drivers who have no regard for life or personal property. Our car that was parked on the street since the the addition of the sidewalk has been sideswiped twice. And that's only in about a year and a half. We often are fearful that we will also be injured by drivers, again, very aggressive speeding drivers in this section of the area of the street. We also regularly witness showdowns, basically when two opposing cars meet and they can't pass. They proceed to honk and yell at each other or get out and threaten each other with violence. This happens quite often, almost on a daily basis. The street is unsafe because of the quantity of drivers speeding through to get to Connecticut. The street was not built or designed for the amount of traffic we receive. We desperately need traffic calming regulations on the street. We have exhausted all known alternatives and have resorted to this restricted access from four to six P M. option, which we fully understand includes local traffic. But we would rather be inconvenienced a few times a week than to continue to worry about ongoing property damage or threat to our lives or the ongoing conflict that happens directly outside of our house. I understand this is an unpopular regulation for others on Lawrence who do not share our problem or those on the other side of Connecticut who use our street as a cut-through. But again, we are desperate for a relief in the amount But again, we are desperate for a relief in the amount of traffic endangering property and life. We too want safe streets that others enjoy. We implore the county to act on our behalf and approve this restriction or offer an alternative that will ease the cut-through traffic on Decatur. The study that the county conducted proves that our street was not built for this kind of traffic and something needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leah. And what was your address?
I'm at three eight one eight Decatur.
Okay, great. Thank you, Leah.
Yep.
Okay. Next, we will hear from Maria Mark. Doesn't look like Maria has joined us yet. How about Nicole Salinger?
Hello, my name is Nicole Salinger. I live on four zero zero two Lawrence Avenue. I am a resident of this neighborhood for over six years and in that time. I have spent a lot of time walking around the neighborhoods, including with my dogs, and I have a cat that is indoor and outdoor, so she travels along the roads frequently. And I have not seen the degree of vehicular aggressiveness that has been testified today. That does not mean that it hasn't occurred, but I do not see it as frequently as those that have testified before me have implied. With that said, I do understand the concerns where kids and pets are in the streets and can be victim to careless drivers. That is not something that I. Am. Unsympathetic to. In fact, if I had children, I would also be very, very cautious to how drivers. Impact the area around my house. With that being said, I do not think that the restriction, the access restriction proposed will adequately. Provide the relief that residents on Decatur are seeking. In actuality, I believe that this will disproportionately affect residents on Lawrence who do not see the amount of traffic that is seen on Decatur. My, my fiance who works as a nurse also travels from his area of work. And does make that right-hand turn onto Decatur to access our house on Lawrence and that he will be impacted. Though with a short commute difference, he would have to go onto Denfeld in order to get around to our house. Which would make it very restrictive for us. We would only be able to go down one way on Lawrence Street. With that said, I don't have any more further testimony, other than I do believe that the best path forward would be to put in speeding bumps. In order to address both aggressive neighbor, aggressive driving and disproportionate amount of speeders. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Um, okay, how, uh, let's see. Lynn Parsons.
Hi there, I'm Lynn Parsons, relatively new resident of Decatur Avenue. I'm at four oh two four. Where there is a water main or some sort of line underneath the roadway that causes an imperceptible hump. And when the trucks go speeding down Decatur as they do, they leave the the ground and. When they come crashing down on the street, they actually shake my house. So I am very sympathetic to the speeding traffic, but unfortunately, no. All due respect to my neighbors, I don't believe this solution solves the problem. I think what we have now is more traffic than there's ever been. There's development going in on Rockville Pike that's going to increase the number of cars that are likely to be traveling through. And we're just displacing it to another location. There's still going to be more cars on the road and I, as a resident of Decatur, am going to find that I have to. Drive a circuitous route on more congested roadway. And I think everyone will, if we want to try to get into Decatur from. The Connecticut Avenue side, there's going to be more traffic coming from Denfeld. Uh, traveling south on Connecticut. So we're going to be bottled into more traffic. To access our street than ever before with this solution. The other problem I see is enforcement. As as human beings are finding that some frustrations of the congestion that we have in this area. Are are beyond their ability to deal with, they break the law. And if we don't have someone to enforce at that intersection all day long, there's going to be cars. Traveling up there irrespective of the restriction. The other thing I see is that by restricting the traffic to one way during the evenings. The downhill traffic is going to be encouraged to go faster, which to me makes it more unsafe. Because they're going to, in theory, have a straight shot without having the. Um, sort of unintentional traffic calming that we have because it does become one way. I think that's the only thing that that improves the safety is that there are some people who are trying to to. Avoid hitting one another and hitting other cars. So anyway, I again, I I am sympathetic to the problem, but I don't see that this is the solution. I see speed humps. As a great solution. I see speed humps on Tuckerman where I know there's emergency vehicles that travel. And so I don't see why the emergency vehicle having to slow down for a speed hump. Is an issue and why we couldn't have speed humps on our our street. There, I'm finally done, sorry.
Thank you, Lynn. Um, next we'll hear from Tim Chambers.
Hey, everybody. Um, I would add my voice. First off, I live on forty nineteen Lawrence Avenue. And my name is Tim Chambers. Um, I would add my voice to those saying we are deeply empathetic to the traffic speed issues. That were mentioned earlier on Decatur. However, as a. Person who lives on Lawrence Avenue, a number of us would have strong concerns that we would suddenly not be able to get home through this more direct route. And then would be forced to drive on a number of other very busy, very crowded streets already, making the traffic on those on Denfeld and other streets. Like needlessly worse. I do would add my voice to also say, I was made, I've been here three years and from the first week of being here, I was like, why are there no speed bumps here? I've lived in other areas in Bethesda that were seemingly less traffic that had speed bumps. And that would seem to be a much better solution from my point of view.
And then also I'm Laura Chambers. I don't know if I'm allowed to speak. We're on the same computer.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. The one thing that I would like to to just make sure that everyone who lives on Lawrence and everyone who lives on. Decatur understands is that those of us, it's very easy to leave late sometime, leave early sometime. And end up, you know, maybe not realizing the time and so you take a right. And maybe that's the day that the police have come out to enforce the restricted right turn. And you're going to get a ticket right along with everyone else. Um, if it were just like a ticket that I paid, I would absolutely a hundred percent be for this. Um, I have a little bit of a concern because it's it's not just like the the parking, the speeding tickets you get in the mail. This is a moving violation. You're being issued a ticket by a police officer for a moving violation. Um, and basically what happens then is your insurance goes up. Your credit rating immediately goes down and you get points on your license. And even if you just get snagged every few years, that's enough that maybe you're paying a little bit more. Than someone who doesn't live on Lawrence or doesn't live on Decatur in order to stop this. Um, with that said, if it's, if you really, if we really want something and we really need something, it's worth paying for. I just want everyone to understand, though, we don't get a break because we live here. We get tickets like everyone else. And having lived in a community that had a restricted right turn, I can tell you when the cops are out, they catch a lot of residents coming home. So that that's just, that's just my comment and thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Next we'll hear from Laura Lee Palmer.
Okay, um, I actually live on Denfeld Court, uh, off of Denfeld Avenue.
What is your address, Laura?
Thirty-nine twenty-four Denfeld Court, and I've lived here since nineteen eighty-eight. And and I am a hundred percent, two hundred percent against this closing of the street. Um, I'm, I need to pay more attention. I walk an hour to two hours every day and I've never seen what these Decatur people are talking about. Uh, and what will happen is Denfeld's going to be even worse, which I can't even imagine. The traffic that Decatur I have noticed is like one tenth, one two-hundredth less than what happens on Denfeld Avenue. And I'm against that being closed too. Uh, the speed bump issue you guys keep bringing up, I don't know if it's still in effect, but Montgomery County had put a moratorium on it. Because you're talking about the emergency vehicles, it really destroys the shocks on the emergency vehicles when they have to go over those at high speed. And that was one of the reasons. One thing I would propose, and it was hated by most of the neighbors. Was when they put the three-way stop at Beach and Wexford. If you wanted to discourage people, make them stop their car. And I loved it because I could get into my neighborhood. So I am really, really against this. I'm sorry, guys. That's enough for me.
Thank you, Laura. Um, all right, next we'll hear from Steve Boo Curse.
Go ahead. Laurie, I don't have anything, you know.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I, you had put a yes under the testimony question.
All right.
Sorry about that. Okay, well then let's go to Ethan Bernardi.
Hi, so I'm at thirty-eight fifteen Decatur Avenue. Um, and I think the resounding issue I hear is speed on Decatur Avenue. And as far as access, so if I'm approaching. Decatur and it says no right turn. There's a traffic circle, so I just go around it and then go straight up Decatur Avenue. So I don't know. This is not a solution. It's probably not the best use of our time because it doesn't. Restrict access. I just go around the circle and go straight and I'm not breaking the law. That's it.
Thank you, Ethan. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Main. I believe this concludes the portion of people who expressed an interest in speaking tonight.
Raise their hand. I'm sorry, Sam.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you have one more person? Joanna Mansilla.
Yes, thank you. This is Joanna Mansilla. I'm at thirty-nine oh eight Decatur. And I've too been on the street for a very long time and agree with everyone that one of our main issues is the speeding. Um, and I do think that, as Ethan and I have discussed, we can, you know. Avoid the right turn by going around the circle, which could cause more danger in the circle. But I just wanted to speak to the emergency vehicles. Which has been, you know, quote unquote, this excuse why Decatur and or Lawrence have not been able to have. Speed bumps is because of the emergency vehicles. But there are numerous, several speed bumps, including new ones on Tuckerman. That all emergency vehicles have to go over. Um, so I don't know why Decatur and Lawrence would be the ones where there can't be speed bumps when there are speed bumps all over the county. Um, and the fire, fire and EMS, they'd seem to do fine in those areas. Um, I really do support assistance on Decatur and Lawrence. Because it had, the speeding is getting out of control. Um, and I do think that speed bumps would be a great solution to to slow people down and maybe even discourage people from coming on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. And next we'll hear from Mary Ann Boardner.
I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute.
That's okay.
Trying to be quiet here. Um, I live on Metro Street one one three two zero. I've lived here for over twenty years now and I have. Actually, two questions. I want to make sure, will you say eastbound on Decatur? Are you talking Connecticut?
Okay, well, right now we're in the testimony portion. Can you hang on to your question and we'll.
I sure, I sure can.
I'm so sorry, but thank you very much, Mary Ann. We'll, we'll get to you first then in the question.
Did I put my hand up again?
No, no, you're fine. Thank you. Um, and now it looks like Mary Ann Carter would like to testify.
Hi, it's Mary Carter and I live at four thousand, that's okay, four thousand Decatur. Excuse me. I've lived on Decatur Avenue for forty years. Um, I am very much in favor of the traffic restrictions. Uh, the volume and the speed are of a huge concern. I often arrive home at rush hour and I don't have a driveway. And I can't get out of my car because of the volume of cars going in both directions. My car has been hit numerous times, as have many of my neighbors. The volume seems to have increased exponentially in the last several years. There are small children that live in our neighborhood. They ride their bikes. There's dogs, there's cats, all kinds of people walk up and down the sidewalk. It's extremely dangerous and we have to do something. I agree with my neighbors who are advocating for speed bumps. I think they would go a long way. But I also feel like we have to do something and the traffic restriction is a good first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, would anyone else like to testify? Okay, Sam?
Thanks, Laurie. I guess this is the Q and A portion of it. Uh, if you want, if you'd like to ask any questions, please click on the. Uh, reaction icon and then raise your hand. Uh, if you're on the phone, you can just dial star nine on your keypad. So with that, we'll wait to see who comes on.
Okay, we'll start with Mary Ann Boardner. Okay, we'll go back to Mary Ann. Uh, now we have Ethan Bernardi.
Uh, I have one question from the representative for the county. Has any of you been on Decatur Avenue?
Uh, Kadija or Sam?
Uh, Kadija, I want to respond to this question. Thank you for asking. Uh, I want to Decatur Avenue several times. And, uh. I observe a traffic pattern and we conduct a survey. Maybe you may have seen.
No, yeah, no, I meant in person, in person.
I met several residents along Decatur Avenue to discuss their concern, I believe in two thousand twenty-two. And I was, I work with the county to install the speed, twenty mile speed limit.
Well, it's actually twenty-five and then twenty.
Yes, twenty, I I saw the twenty mile, this mile per hour speed limit installation. I didn't see the twenty-five miles. But I have a recall of. But I have a recall of, uh,
Okay.
Yeah.
For the, so one per, one person, one person has been, from the county, has been up to Decatur Avenue. Thank you.
All right. I believe so, that Mr. Kerser also worked on, uh, this, uh, Decatur Avenue. He may add, uh, some to what I said. Uh, we, we always, uh, feel investigated when we have a complaint.
Okay, so maybe two people. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ethan. Uh, next we'll hear from Mary Ann Bordner.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you muted me again, so I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And when there was no, so anyway, I have two questions. One is I want to make sure that I have east to west. So when you're talking eastbound on Decatur, are you talking Wexford to Connecticut or Connecticut to Wexford?
Um, I want to ask to, uh, answer your question. So when we're, we're talking about, uh, eastbound traffic, we are talking about the traffic going from Westward Drive to our Connecticut Avenue.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And then I, I actually have a question. How will this impact the other roads? Um, by the school on Denfield and, um, Knowles Avenue and Beach Avenue? Because if people can't go up there, they're going to have to go out another way. So what will be done to monitor the impact there? Because on Denfield by the school, it is not a pleasant place to drive at that time of day.
I believe we review all those concerns, and the implementation will start from four P M., which is, uh, not, uh, during school hours. Four to six P M., even there is a traffic, it may not be that impactful, I believe.
But will it be monitored afterwards to make sure that there's no impact? Because getting out onto Beach from Wexford is terrible that time of day. I do that a lot. And I can sometimes sit there for twenty, thirty cars till somebody lets me out.
Uh, as we said during the presentation, when the, uh, this restriction is implemented, we have mandated to observe. If there is very impactful, uh, the county have a right to review, remove the restriction, and let the community know about why this, uh, restriction was, uh, removed.
Okay, will that observation by you observing or by people sending in comments?
Uh, we will observe. We have, uh, we need to monitor all those new, uh, signs. So, uh, we will observe, and we will also be open to any comment from resident. We'll assess them and, uh, make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have a question from Tim Chambers.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'd heard different things from people, and I was wondering if I could get a definitive answer. Um, I'm assuming in Montgomery County, or what I've heard, is that in Montgomery County, there is no way to do restrictions like this, but to have a local exemption for residents, which I think would go a long way to resolving some of the objections to this. Um, but I would like to confirm if that's true or not. What I've heard is that there are no ways that laws like, or uh, traffic restrictions like this could exempt local residents.
Uh, thank you for your question, uh, Tim. Uh, based on the access restriction is, uh, implemented based on, uh, the executive regulation seventeen dash ninety-four A M. And, uh, reviewing that, you will see that there is no exemption to local traffic. You may have seen, uh, exemption at some location, it may be not under the county, uh, jurisdiction. It may be a city, uh, which has more, you know, flexibility than the county. But if we have to follow the executive regulation in regard to access restriction, there is no exemption. So, uh, for the Caddo Avenue, we, we will not have any exemption for local traffic. I don't know if I respond to your question.
Um, actually, Kadija, uh, Joanna Mansilla just sent in the chat, uh, asking if they would be able to apply. Is there any means of applying for an exemption? Or is that just not part of the statute whatsoever?
Uh, the question again, uh, Laurie, sorry. What's the question?
Is there any means of applying for an exemption, or is it just not?
So far, I didn't see any waiver for, uh, yeah. Uh, I, I don't, I don't believe we have any waiver for local traffic.
Yeah, my name is Saifu Kursay from Montgomery County, who work with Kadija. There is no exemption for local traffic only. You know, the county, if the roadway is, the roadway normally is used by all traffic users. But under some conditions where we have access restriction, it has to be closed for every, everyone. There is no any, you know, we cannot create situations where we allow certain people and really uh, restrict other people. It has to be closed to everybody or open to everybody. And, uh, also, you know, if you want to enforce that kind of restriction, that's practically impossible. Police officer cannot stop you. Where do you live? Where is your driver's license? So they cannot ask that. So this enforcement is also an issue that is there. So there is no any consideration for local traffic only.
Thank you. Thank you, Stifu. Um, next, we have a question from Diane Logston.
Hello again. Um, put my hand down, lower hand. Okay. Um, the people who are suggesting the speed bumps, that's exactly what you're hearing about all of the other options. I have been working for over, I think, over fifteen years. I started working with Kifu, Keith. I'm gonna get your name wrong, I'm sorry. Kifu Kursay, Mr. Kursay. Uh, for many years, it's no matter what we ask for, there's a county policy code restriction saying you absolutely can't have it. So speed bumps, policy says we can't have it. Signs that say local traffic, policy says we can't have it. With all of the years that we've spent working with the county to try to address the traffic, the restricted traffic option is the only one that we could apply to this street. That is it. And so I, I was mostly raising my hand to have the county maybe elaborate on that a little bit. Personally, I would love it if we could get together and appeal some of these processes, these codes that say, you know, you can't have it because X Y Z is the, you know, the way your street is, is configured. Um, but, you know, again, it's just more work and an enormous amount of red tape. And just for the people who have said they've never seen the traffic, it just means that you haven't been here during rush hour. You can ask any person who's ever had to do any kind of maintenance on this street. Tree landscaping, uh, W S S C, Washington Gas, ask any of these people that have ever had to work on this street. Their own lives are, are in danger every time anybody has to do work on this street. Thank you.
Is Kadija, uh, just want to respond to Diana's, uh, you know, uh, uh, resident's speed hamper requirement. I saw a lot of error call of your request from two thousand seventeen to now. You still ask for speed and, um, installation. Unfortunately, we have to meet certain criteria. Uh, if we have to follow the executive regulation one, uh, dash eighteen A M. And as you said, you, you know, we have a criteria, uh, for the length which are Decatur Avenue met. Uh, we have a volume which is met, but we don't have a speed pattern. From, uh, that time, uh, two thousand seventeen to now, we still below the thirty, thirty-two miles per hour speeds we need to observe before, uh, installing, uh, meeting the three criteria. Those three criteria, I'll repeat, re- repeat the length, which need to be one thousand, uh, uh, feet without a, uh, yell or stop sign. Uh, Decatur is a good candidate for that, uh, the volume. We already have the volume, which, uh, uh, lead has us to the access restriction, but we don't have the speed requirement. And, uh, based on that, we cannot install for now, uh, the speed ham. The last request you made was in two thousand twenty-two. And, uh, after a request, it didn't, was rejected, you need to wait three years before applying to a new speed, uh, hamper, uh, uh, installation. So maybe you may wait for two thousand twenty-five. To us again, if we have, now that the speed is twenty miles per hour, if we can observe twenty-seven miles per hour, you may be a good candidate. Uh, the most recent, uh, uh, speed, uh, assessment we did was in October two thousand twenty-three. And, uh, we have less than, uh, twenty-seven mile per hour. So, uh, this is, uh, the facts. And, uh, we bear with you, we know is a concern. You may feel like there is a speeding, but when we measure, we didn't see that pattern yet. Uh, we'll still be open, uh, for the next, uh, assessment. This what I have to say about the speed limit, uh, uh, speed hamper installation.
Thank you, Kadija. Um, okay, uh, next we have a question from Rachel Daley.
Hello, this is, uh, actually Richard, uh, Richard Grant. I'm Rachel's husband, and we're at thirty-nine twenty Decatur Avenue. And the question was actually in relation to the speed survey, um, that, um, your colleague was just talking about. Um, so the, I'm looking at the survey results right now, and it, it does indicate that several vehicles, um, thirteen percent actually were traveling in excess of twenty-six miles per hour. And, um, another four vehicles were in excess of thirty-one miles per hour. And overall, it does indicate there's a lot of speeding on our street. Um, I, I would ask you guys to have a look at those studies and, um, and, um, clarify to us whether, uh, the speed bumps could be, uh, reviewed again based on these survey results. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your question.
Kadija, can I say something?
Sure.
I think, yeah, to, you know, today's meeting is really in relation to the access restriction. So if you need to submit a speed amp request, we can, the G O T can review that separately. So I don't think we need to discuss a speed amp at this forum because this is a public hearing regarding access restriction. Otherwise, we're going all over the place. Just let's narrow it down to the, you know, the access restriction portion and speed amp, we know you guys are requesting a speed amp, so that we will take a look at it and we'll get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Saifu.
Okay, next we have a question from Lynn Parsons.
So my question has to do with, uh, the enforcement. My, I, I attended a meeting with the Montgomery County Police where we were hearing that they are understaffed and they have to triage and, and determine which, um, issues are most important. And I can't imagine that enforcing the restriction on a very narrow window of time is gonna always be something that they can prioritize. Do you have additional staff that, that attend to that? Because as I can, I, I think you can hear, there's plenty of people already breaking the law by speeding, and that's not being enforced. So how will we hope to have the enforcement of this traffic restriction? I just feel like anytime you, in, you know, you set up a, a precedent where people routinely break the law, it just gets worse. So that's my question. How will this be enforced?
Saifu, uh, could you help with this?
Okay, you know, the, the my enforcement, traffic law enforcement, or always is a responsibility of the Montgomery County Police Department. We don't have enforcement power. We don't have manpower, you know, located to enforce traffic laws. We don't have the authority to enforce traffic laws. So enforcing traffic laws always lies on Montgomery County Police Department. So our, you know, role is, is just passing that regulation, installing the sign, and we'll let the Montgomery County Police Department know that we have done that. Please take, you know, take a look at it. So they're, they're always, you know, it, it might not be always, might not come out to enforce it, but they'll have the time sometime to come and enforce it. But generally speaking, it's, uh, Montgomery County Police Department who enforce the traffic laws.
Okay, we have, uh, a couple of questions in the chat. Um, Kay Gorman would like to know, would the traffic coming around the circle, say cars coming down Denfield Avenue, be allowed to access Decatur?
Well, uh, the question is, as we presented, uh, the right turn will be restricted from Westward. So, uh, if that's approved, uh, I, I believe coming from Denfeld Avenue is not making a right turn on Decatur, so it should be allowed to go through. This is, uh, a, a true traffic, not a, a right turn movement.
Okay. Sorry, I was just reading through the chat. Um, let's, let's hear from Leah Schneider.
Hi again. Um, I just want to say thank you to, to everybody for advocating for the speed bumps. I, I, I do think speed bumps would be fantastic, but um, d- otherwise, if this ac- access restriction is not approved, what are our options? I think we all agree that there, well, for the most part, um, we agree that there is a traffic issue in this area. And some people aren't experiencing it because we're getting all of it on Decatur, um, and Denfeld predominantly and Wexford. Um, so what other solutions can the county offer to us to prov- to help reduce the amount of traffic coming off of Beach in particular onto Wexford, Denfeld, and Decatur, and well, as well as Lawrence? What other options are there?
Well, uh, Saifu, I, I need to.
Yeah, you know, right now we're looking at this access restriction. If this doesn't go through, we'll come and talk to you guys, or find some other solution. That's, you know, alternative should be later on, after this access restriction, whether it passed or.
It, it, I would really like for you to identify what those options would be, please.
I, we haven't thought about that.
It sounds like there aren't any.
Because we're coming here to do this access restriction, uh, presentation, not as a, and yet.
I understand, but this is related to that because the problem will still not be resolved, resolved at all. So I'm asking, how will the county resolve the problem?
We may review, uh, Saifu, if you don't mind. We may review, uh, that, uh, since you raised it, this, uh, concern. We may review, and by the time, uh, this, uh, uh, restriction is, uh, rejected, we'll look into other solution.
Like what?
It may be physical.
Uh, I think we, I'm sorry, Leah, but, um, this, we ha- this is a public hearing, and, uh,
I understand, I just, that's a, it's a valid question.
Statute, we have
It's a valid question.
The exact subject, which is the access restriction. You can, um, you can contact Kadija or Stifu in the morning. Thank you. Um, let's next hear from Laura Lee Palmer.
Yes, um, I, as far as her other question is, uh, you know, any restrict, any stoppage of traffic on one road will push it into another. Uh, Denfield- Uh, Denfield, especially during rush hour, we don't have speeding problem because people move at a snail's pace. And I have, I'm not saying that Decatur does not have traffic, but it is nothing compared to what happens on Denfield. And if you close up that road, guess where it's gonna go? I personally think part of it is Kensington had, the town itself has stopped a lot of traffic from going through their neighborhoods.
Laura.
We get it, so.
I'm sorry, the testimony portion is over, I'm sorry. Do you have a question?
Um, actually, I was kinda answering hers, you know, um. Oh, uh, I was wondering, on, on uh Decatur itself, people park on both sides of the road, would there be a way of just making it so people can only park on one side? They do that a lot in DC and it might help a lot with, especially if people are getting their cars hit.
That's a great question.
Okay.
I, I, I think this is still out of the the discussion we're having tonight, this not access restriction. But, you know, let, let, it, let, you know, the community submit to restrict parking on one side and we'll, we'll let you know how we can do it.
Yeah, you, you can submit a request via email to the Traffic Ops. Actually, the, the email address is on the screen there. Um, let's next hear from Nicole Salinger.
Good evening, I, oh, I think so, another resident brought this up, but if the access restriction would only apply, with the access restriction, it will only apply as a right turn. So theoretically, a, a driver can continue straight into the roundabout, circle the roundabout, and then proceed to go up Decatur without problem, without, I mean, it's, do, do you understand what I'm saying? Like, they can just go around the, the, the roundabout there and then proceed up Decatur with no access restriction? Is that going to be allowed?
Well, I, I believe I responded to that question earlier. Uh, the right turn is restricted. So when you come from Denfield, uh, I don't, I don't think the restriction uh will impact uh those coming from Denfield, so. It's uh, for now, this is why the uh restriction we are implementing. But as we said, we'll reassess the impact if we solve the problem that you're concerned. Uh, if we didn't solve your concern, we may look, uh, we may need to look into uh other impacts and assess them.
It just seems very silly to me that you'd have a right-only access, but still allow traffic from Denfield. It, that just seems problematic, but this is no longer the test buddy time. Thank you for your.
The reason we're having this kind of forum is to find, to get feedback and how you think about this access restriction, you know. At the final decision before the county executive make a decision, all these comments will be incorporated into that decision, so. The, if the restriction that we already identified is not, is, is not complete, it can be modified during the, you know, by the executive to make it a full. So if you're thinking that the ex, the restrictions have to be modified, it should include also coming on Denfield to Decatur, that can be considered, but I don't think that that, that traffic circle I can see it can be used as, you know, go around, make a turn and go through Decatur Avenue, I can see that. We, we might not have seen that, but we can modify the final decision based on these comments.
Okay, next we have a question from Diane Lawston.
Hi again, this is actually not a question, um, this is for the people asking about the parking on the street. Most of the homes, I would say probably maybe at least fifty percent of the homes do not have driveways. Many, if not all of the homes, have more than two cars. So that's why you can't just restrict parking on one side of the street. In addition, only one side of the street has a sidewalk. So anybody parking on one side of the street means they have to actually get in the street every single time they get out of their car. For people who are asking about the, the traffic patterns, if you go back and read the proposal, the county actually did a significant amount of um traffic surveying, studying, I'm not sure what word to use, but they, they went through and they looked at the traffic patterns of all of the, the feeder streets that, that come through and around Decatur. So they looked at Connecticut, they looked at Denfield, they looked at Knowles, they looked at Beach, they looked at Wexford, they tracked how much traffic is there. This is, that's not a decision to restrict this, this one two-hour window, right turns from Wexford was not made in a vacuum. They didn't just decide, oh, well, we'll just do two hours. They actually went and did the study, they did the work.
Diane, thank you. Um, do you have a question?
No, I'm just helping to answer the other questions that people have.
I understand, but this is a public hearing and so we kinda have to stick, keep it moving and stick to the subject matter. Um, Lynn Parsons has the question.
I'm just curious, um, the density of, of um residents that's going to be increasing because of the development on um, on Rockville Pike. Is any of that taken into consideration when you're making these decisions? The fact that the, the traffic is, the number of cars on the roadway are actually going to be increasing? I know that when they do these developments, they think about how it impacts the um, the immediate area, but do you take that into consideration when you're making these kinds of decisions about um, you know, somewhat close by area? I see it as having an impact, for sure.
Uh, uh, I, I need to go back and check. Uh, basically, we don't know which development you are mentioning here. And as we said, uh, our study is the, the current condition and the projected based on the data we collected and we have available at this time. Uh, we don't have the projection, traffic projection uh included in this uh, in this uh study. So it's something we may look, because most of the time developer, they come, they, they have to come to our, uh, the county and uh we may raise uh the impact to this new uh restriction if implemented. We may point that to them to consider other, you know, traffic mitigation in case this will impact Decatur Avenue.
Yeah, to add to Kadija's point, this access restriction is based on actual current traffic situation, not any projected traffic. So we didn't consider any of the new developments there, just actual traffic volumes.
Thank you, that's, that's what I was thinking, but thank you.
Okay, now we have a question from Jen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so at one of the, the previous forums regarding um solutions for Decatur Avenue, it was brought to my attention that some of the surrounding roads, like for example Connecticut, and I believe Knowles are actually like state roads. They're not necessarily controlled by the county. Uh, so my question is for some of these, like, uh, you mentioned the ninety-day, like, monitoring, following implementation, if that ends up happening, um, goes on, how is there any coordination between like the county and the state? Or, for example, I'm curious to know, like, what kind of coordination exists for the surrounding streets that may or may not, you know, be affected by this decision? Or are they just simply not looked at at all because they're state roads?
No, always Montgomery County works with the state highway administration. We, we, when there is, have, they have issues on our roadways, they contact us when we have issues on there, always they contact us. So when we're doing anything new, we always let them know that we're doing this. So if anything happens because of our decision, they'll let us know.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, that was the last question I have. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, Sam?
I've seen that all questions have been answered. Um, we will now conclude the hearing. Uh, the, we'll keep the, you know, this open for the record for an additional four weeks. Comments and written testimonies are due by six PM on April twelfth. Um, those could be sent, you can see the email address here on the screen, trafficops@montgomerycountymd.gov. Uh, those could also be mailed to us. Access restriction under consideration, Decatur Avenue, Division of Traffic Engineering and Operation, one hundred Edison Park, fourth floor, Gatesburg, Maryland, uh, two zero eight seven eight. And we'll drop that in the chat as well. Um, so thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Uh, this public hearing is now concluded.